This is case RZ 13-15. This application was heard by the Planning Commission on February the 5th. The project name and applicant is Atlanta Resources Enterprises, L-L-L-P. The owner is Mark Kik. The property is located at the address of 1296 1302 and 1304 Kendrick Road. The property is located in the 18th District in Landlocked 241 and the site contains 1.176 acres. The existing zoning of the property is R100. The requested zoning is C1, which is local commercial. The owner, petitioner's intent is to rezone the subject property from R100 to C1, local commercial, for construction of an accessory parking lot for the adjoining existing business and expansion. The staff has recommended denial of the request for the C1 zoning and we have recommended an alternative zoning of NS for neighborhood shopping and lieu thereof for the construction of the accessory parking lot for the existing business and expansion. The subject property consists of three adjacent lots which adjoin the existing Nuts and Berries business. They're located on the north side of Kendrick Road, west of its intersection with Peachtree Road. The site is currently developed with single-family residence, accessed by three individual curb cuts along Kendrick Road. The lots are bordered on the east and north side by commercial properties owned C1 and C2, which are both commercial. To the west of the site is a residential structure currently used as a personal care home known as Safe Haven, zoned R100. To the east, the applicant owns and operates the retail store Nuts and Berries located at 4274 Peachtree Road. The applicant seeks to expand their existing business by adding a second-story addition and extending the storefront towards Peachtree Road, thus requiring additional parking. The applicant submitted site plan shows that the required 50-foot transitional buffer zone is proposed adjacent to residentially zoned property to the west and that all three residential structures will be demolished. The applicant proposes to utilize two existing curb cuts for access to the proposed parking lot, which will connect to an internal two-way driveway providing access around the parking lot and to the service area located to the northeast portion of the property. Additionally, the applicant proposes to locate a water detention area adjacent to the transitional buffer to account for stormwater runoff associated with the parking lot. The subject property is identified on the future development map as traditional neighborhood character area. The proposed C1 zoning submitted by the applicant is not in conformance with that particular character area. However, NS neighborhood shopping is, therefore it was substituted as an alternative by the staff. The subject property could be suitable for an accessory parking lot to serve an existing neighborhood retail use in light of the mixture of institutional and commercial uses abutting the property if the appropriate buffer is installed. Approving the property for NS would allow for a zoning district in use that would be suitable for the area and function as a transition between existing commercial and residential uses. With proper conditions to establish and enhance vegetative screen along the associated frontage of the parking lot adjacent to Kendrick Road, that particular installation of screening would mitigate, would help to mitigate impacts to residential uses located to the south. It does appear that the subject property has economic uses currently zoned. Approval of the property for NS neighborhood shopping would further reduce impacts to the neighborhood by facilitating the removal of uninhabitable residential structures in a non-conforming parking area and will establish a 50-foot transitional buffer to the west and enhanced landscaping along the Kendrick Road frontage. The neighborhood shopping zoning district would be conforming to the established policies for the character area. The proposed C1 zoning would not be suitable at this location as it is identified in the comprehensive plan, therefore the staff substituted NS and lieu thereof. There do not appear to be any known historic building sites, districts, or archaeological resources identified by the applicant or known by the staff to be on or near the property. To date, the city of Brookhaven has not received a response from DeKalb County offices or the DeKalb County school system. The development of an accessory parking lot for expansion of an existing business under the NS zoning district would not cause excessive or burdensome use of streets, transportation, facilities, utilities, or schools. In regard to comments from Public Works, driveway modifications on Peachtree will require a GDOT permit and the Peachtree Road entrance should be restricted to a right turn in only. The handicap ramp on Kendrick and Peachtree Road shall be updated as necessary and the appropriate stormwater management system shall be installed along with a construction stormwater facility management agreement. The police department has indicated that the development shall have no impact on current police services and will not require additional personnel. The staff recommended denial of the request for rezoning to C1 zoning and instead, in lieu thereof, recommended NS neighborhood shopping. And we recommended that zoning with the following 12 conditions paraphrased. Number one would be the site plan. Number two is the requirement for transitional buffer. Number three is the requirement for a combination plat to combine these three lots with the existing business. The fourth is the requirement for streets and sidewalks and parking requirements of the Brookhaven Peachtree overlay district to be incorporated into the development of the subject property as required by the Community Development Director. The owner developer shall construct a five-foot sidewalk along the entire frontage of Kendrick Road for the subject property with a three-foot wide landscape strip and shall be subject to review and approval of the Public Works Director. The owner developer shall implement a 15-foot wide landscape strip for the parking lot adjacent to the right-of-way Kendrick Road in compliance with transitional buffer zone planning standards and subject to approval of the City of Brookhaven Arboretum. Number seven, only the curb cuts shown on the site plan dated January 2nd may be permitted. No additional curb cuts shall be allowed. The owner developer shall obtain a GDOT, Georgia Department of Transportation, Peachtree Road driveway modification for the Nuts and Berries property. The Peachtree Road entrance shall be restricted to a right in, excuse me, right turn in only. The owner developer must obtain a demo permit for removal of all residential structures and associated driveways located on the property prior to obtaining any permits related to the proposed expansion or to utilization of the property for parking. The owner developer shall obtain a land disturbance permit for development of the property compliant with requirements of land development zoning regulations. Utilization of the parking lot shall not be authorized until the required buffer, sidewalk, curb cut, and landscape strip are correctly installed and appropriate stormwater management shall be installed along with a stormwater management agreement. And the Planning Commission recommended denial of this request and that completes the staff report.
Thank you. Any questions for Susan? I had one. I see in this kind of rendering, which is part of the file, towards the end.
Packet page.
Two, it says micro, it's micro print, so it's like 185.
207.
206. Okay, I'm making the wrong one. K 31. You see it?
I'm looking at...
It's like a pencil drawing of a...
A sketch?
Yes.
To the screen.
That's 206.
Anyway, there's a utility pole on it.
I'm on 206, but I don't see it.
Anyway, so we don't have to waste any more time. It's just not a major point. Are we not requesting or requiring developments like this to bury the utility pole in the front of the property or...
Actually...
It's on the sketch. I don't know if that's just there.
The sketch is actually not part of the condition of zoning. We did not reference this as that. And this particular rendering with the architectural sketch is not actually part of the zoning case.
Okay.
So...
I just wanted to make that point.
We would certainly make sure with his expansion that we incorporate the components of the Brookhaven Peachtree overlay district in that regard.
I don't know if it's a part of it, but...
There is an intention to put utilities underground.
Right, okay.
That could be a condition that the council adds.
Okay. Thank you.
The NS district, I don't see a parking lot as a permitted use in the NS district. How are we allowing this use in this particular district?
My opinion is that neighborhood shopping allows for shopping, which allows for parking, and therefore my opinion is that parking would be allowed as accessory. In addition to requiring the combination plat with these three lots in conjunction with the business, in my opinion, it would be allowed.
Even if the, even if the shopping isn't on that parcel?
Yes, ma'am. And actually, one of the conditions of zoning is combining the four lots, the three plus the one.
So we, we have an accessory use on an adjacent lot or what will be a combined lot in a different zoning category?
Correct.
That's a permitted use? The properties to the south immediately across Kendrick, I think if I remember, were residential, R100. Why is there not a buffer along Kendrick also adjacent to those residential lots? I see one on the west side, but not one on the south, what I'm calling the south side, which is that Kendrick Road frontage adjacent to those residential...
You mean across the street?
Across the street, yes, ma'am.
Because the street creates the demarcation that it's not abutting.
I've always heard that the street, that's an interpretation that, I've heard that the property owners go to the center line of the street, i.e. if the street goes away and that the, so that the street is not an impediment. That's, that's interesting, okay. Different interpretation I've heard over the last...
Definitely so.
On the sketch again, that shows two-story, which is, which is in compliance with the overlay.
Yes, sir.
Is that a vaulted, is that just a vaulted ceiling or is that actual a floor where there'd be tables or use of some type? Or is that not part of the plan yet? I can ask the applicant.
Yeah, the applicant really should address that, but they are proposing to go two stories up and push the building closer to Peachtree Road.
Right, I know, right.
And this is a schematic.
Right, okay. All right, thank you. Any more questions for Susan? All right. Can we hear from the applicant, Mr. Kik? Or Linda, for Mr. Kik?
Good evening. I'm Linda Dunleavy and I'm here on behalf of the applicant. Mr. Kik, the owner of Nuts and Berries, is here to answer any questions that the council may have. It is the Nuts and Berries business that is driving this application. As the mayor has pointed out, there is a conceptual sketch in your package showing what it is that Nuts and Berries wants to do, but as Ms. Cannon has said, the Nuts and Berries property itself is not part of the rezoning. The rezoning request is for the three lots behind what is currently Nuts and Berries. The reason for the rezoning request is the desire to expand Nuts and Berries out the front in this two-story conceptual design that the mayor has pointed out. Before I get too much into the substance, I do want to talk about what we'll be requesting tonight. We are not requesting that this council vote this application up or down. On February 6th, I emailed to all council persons and to Ms. Cannon and concerned and interested neighbors my notice that we would be requesting a deferral. Unfortunately, I was retained to represent the applicant in this case 24 hours before the Planning Commission hearing. Then I left the next day for an out-of-country trip for two weeks, and so I've had very little time to familiarize myself with the application. But what is very clear after the Planning Commission hearing is that this zoning got off on the wrong foot. What is very clear is that time needs to be spent working with the neighborhood, trying to engage in meaningful dialogue, hopefully coming up with a compromise plan or at least giving it the best try. You know, Nuts and Berries has been a business in this community for in excess of 20 years. This is the first time that they have come before a body like this seeking rezoning or expansion of their business. I think that there may be a lot of creative alternatives to the plan that has been submitted to this body for consideration tonight, and I would like an opportunity along with Mr. Kik, who has a sincere desire to work with this community, to try and come up with a plan. We are asking actually for a fairly lengthy deferral. I think in my email, I identified it as a full-cycle deferral and forgive me, that's the old DeKalb County lawyer in me. I'm not even sure whether the city of Brookhaven uses that term. But what we would be asking for is that this matter be deferred to, for consideration by this body on June the 14th with a remand to Planning Commission. Planning Commission made it abundantly clear that they wanted to see, working with the neighborhood, consideration of alternative plans and to actually be presented with an alternative plan. So that is what we're asking, is that there be a deferral to the city council on June 14th. I do understand that there are a number of neighbors out here who vigorously oppose this application for a variety of reasons that I can't even begin to probe in the brief time that we have. I would hope that this council would see the merit in allowing a fresh set of eyes, mainly me and maybe Mr. Kik, with, you know, sort of new understanding of what he is up against at this point, to come up with a plan that would work for everybody or at least give us that opportunity through June 14th. And so that's what we're asking for. I wouldn't save any remaining time that I might have for rebuttal and certainly would entertain questions.
Thank you.
Question on your date. I may have this wrong. June 14th is a Saturday.
June 10th. I'm sorry, June 10th.
June 10th, okay.
I saw June 10th, 2014, and I blurred them together. It is June 10th and Planning Commission would be June 4th.
Thank you.
Susan, do you want to make sure we got those dates right?
June 10th and June 4th.
Okay.
June 4th would be Planning Commission. And then what's application deadline?
I'm counting right now. We would need a revised plan by May the 12th.
May 12th. Does, does that work for the applicant?
Does that work for...
Yes.
Is that agreeable to community development?
May 12th, yes.
That's their date. Okay, great. Just wanted to make sure. And then before May 12th, I guess there were, that's what, two and a half months? Ample time to meet with the neighborhood at length before that.
It is certainly my intention, you know, should this body defer the matter, to immediately start working on dates with the neighborhood. And quite frankly, it's my hope that rather than putting a plan in front of the neighborhood, we sit down with the neighborhood and talk about, okay, what do you guys want to see? Can we give you that? Can it work? We would also, you know, want the assistance of staff to look at this, any sort of conceptual plan that we come up with, with the neighborhood to say, this can be done from a code standpoint.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any more, anyone here to speak in support of this application? Anybody here to speak in opposition to this application? Okay. You have a, just Daniel, call out the names.
Baxter Thompson.
All right.
My name is Baxter.
Make sure that the applicant has a copy of what you're giving us.
Baxter. Baxter. Thank you. Thanks, sir. Yeah. Good, thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, the clerk's going to need a copy of what's being...
Clerk and the applicant.
This was emailed to the mayor council.
It's actually in the packet.
It's in our packet.
It's in the packet. So we just wanted to provide copies that you guys have to have that for reference.
Thank you. Susan can have one of these and then, and Ms. Dunleavy, do you have one? You have this one up here.
Is that an email that we have?
This is the PowerPoint. It's in the packet.
Linda, do you have one?
Yes, she does. She does. She didn't get the note. She got the paper.
Okay. My name is Baxter Thompson. I live at 1276 Kendrick Road, two houses down from the rezoning. I'm here to speak on behalf of myself and also as a director of the Kendrick Osborne Neighborhood Association's newly formed Georgia nonprofit corporation. I apologize for having to be so quick. I want to respond to Linda's proposal to go ahead and defer this. We actually wanted to defer this at the Planning Commission. Mr. Kik refused to do so. Since then, he's refused to meet with us. We've been at this for, for months and months and months. We haven't been able to figure anything out and in my analysis, it does not look like we can really come to an agreement that will fit within current zoning laws. On that note, I'd like to talk about precedent. In terms of future development in the city of Brookhaven, to allow this type of rezoning would set a dangerous precedent for commercial encroachment into residential areas. And if you look at Kendrick, where would it stop? Would it just keep going? Interestingly, the Community Development Department recommended that the subject parcels be rezoned neighborhood shopping to allow for construction of an accessory parking lot incidental to the primary use of Nuts and Berries. In making an important note, as you guys pointed out, parking lot is not a primary use allowed in neighborhood shopping district. In making their recommendation, it appears as though the Community Development Department did not look at Section 27-31 of the Brookhaven Municipal Code, which states that an accessory use must be located on the same lot with the principal use. Again, Nuts and Berries is not a part of this rezoning application. Therefore, the use of the subject parcels as an accessory parking lot incidental to the primary use of Nuts and Berries, which is located on a separate parcel, is strictly prohibited under Brookhaven's own municipal code. As Ms. Cannon pointed out, turning to the comprehensive plan, it shows that the parcels as traditional neighborhood, traditional neighborhood. Mr. Kik has had a history of non-compliance in the past. He, prior to this application and in anticipation of this rezoning request, he brought in upwards of 50 dump truck loads of dirt and cut down huge numbers of trees without proper permitting from DeKalb County. This was confirmed by Betsy Stark, senior planner with DeKalb County. The trees were almost entirely located on the 50-foot buffer between R100 and the proposed NS. We would have had a great buffer. He cut down literally every tree. You can see that in your parking lot or in the packet. Spot zoning is also an issue here, a case Westbrook versus Board of Adjustment. It was a case just like this. There was a residential property that ordered commercial. It was found to be legal spot zoning and it was, it was designed where such rezoning was, was properly denied, where such rezoning appeared that the owner purchased with full knowledge of the residential restrictions of the, of the lots when he purchased them. Finally, the Brookhaven Peachtree Livable Centers Initiative, the LCI, does not include the subject parcels as part of the commercial development. I'd like to ask the next person to speak.
Hello, my name is Alondo Jones. I live at 2771 Tallulah Drive, in the corner of Tallulah and Kendrick. And I'd like to speak a little bit about the applicant's being a little bit encroaching in what his requests are and his actual intents. As he's already stated, his need is to expand his business based off of what he says is his clientele needs, but if you actually visit the store, the store's actually been partitioned, so there's actual less square footage of inventory. And then by making his building larger, he's created an issue that didn't exist already and the need to expand his parking and then therefore creates a compliance issue, therefore the need to expand his lots. In doing so, he creates, as already stated by previous parties, a situation where there are three lots that now become one large lot and encroaches with this equivalent of three, as you can see in the overhead there. Three lots become one large, equivalent of three houses, which are my neighbors to the east of me. This creates a situation where you have a community being encroached by a community business that we feel is unacceptable. And as previously stated, we have tried to work with him before to try and figure out some solution, anything from, you know, having his parking lot run north to south instead of east to west to potentially making the lots the use they are now, which is R100, and building new houses there. His reply was basically that he felt that was not reasonable due to the poor view of the, composed by the, I think it's a storage place to the north. But our recent development has shown large growth in our community with 11 houses on Tallulah, nine on Kendrick, many of which face that same view that he says is not, you know, viable solution. So what we have is a person who is trying to request rights that no other business has to rezone as stated by Baxter in a situation that has not done before. And would create that slippery slope where you have businesses encroaching in residential properties. Thank you.
Next.
Good evening. My name is Mara Morrison. I live at 1238 Kendrick Road. I'm her husband Ed Morrison and our three children, Anna, who is six, Emily, who is four, and Matthew, who is two. Ed and I moved to Kendrick Road about eight years ago looking for a residential area to live in close to the city because we wanted a sense of community, to feel a sense of community, and we've established that in our neighborhood over the years. We have family cookouts, we have pig roast, we have child playdates in our neighborhood. And I've really enjoyed the sense of community we've established in our neighborhood. My only complaint about my neighborhood is traffic. Since the conclusion of Town Brookhaven, traffic has increased tremendously on our street. I have three kids, as I've mentioned, who are wild, full of energy. They love to ride their bikes. However, it's really hard, as it is right now, for them to be outside playing on the street. For example, just for them to ride their bike, and I'm not exaggerating here, about 300 yards up the street, I have them pull over two to three times, car coming, car coming, car coming. I honestly feel like I spend more time watching the cars go by than watching my children riding their bikes. On Sunday, we were outside for 10 minutes, too crowded, I got them in the car, went down to the zoo to enjoy the day. So I just feel that more commercial encroachment into our areas is going to increase traffic, which we just, we don't have, we just can't, sorry, what I'm trying to say here is we don't have room for more traffic. We're already congested enough. We have, if you look at the demographics of our children on page 19, my children are of the older age group. We have, we have a number of children growing up, getting ready to start riding their bikes, wanting to enjoy these things in our neighborhood. So I just respectfully request any denial of any proposal to rezon residential zoning into commercial zoning. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next.
Dave Bars. I am Dave Bars. I live with my wife and I live at 1299 Kendrick, which is directly across the street from the property. About a year and a half ago, mayoral candidate J. Max Davis was at town forum at Oglethorpe and he did an eloquent job of casting a vision for Brookhaven being the crown jewel of the southeast. And we liked that. But let me tell you what taking time to talk this thing through looks like with the applicant. About a month ago, the applicant stood in front of my house and explained to me that if I didn't get my neighbors on board with his plan, that he would sell out to a big developer with deep pockets and those guys get anything they want and we'd have to fight them. That's what, that's what cooperation looks like. What the crown jewel looks like to a developer and what it looks like to residential homeowners may be two different things. And we are homeowners, residential homeowners in a community, in a community like Ashford Park or Brittany or Brookhaven Heights, Brookhaven Fields, historic Brookhaven, Hampton Hall. We're a community just like that. And we have kids playing and going back and forth and people walking to supper clubs and enjoying each other's company. And we fight the traffic to do that and we literally move out of the way to not get run over, but we do the best we can. We receive campaign letters from, from Mayor Davis and Councilman Bates and they espouse things like vision of a livable and walking community to protect our neighborhoods and property values, to promote pedestrian shopping areas, reducing automotive traffic and supporting a master plan such as the Brookhaven Overlay LCI. And we like all of those things. We're on board with you. And we would ask that you follow the recommendation of the Planning Committee, who already unanimously denied this, and we ask that tonight you would vote up or down, and we ask that unanimously vote this application down. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bars.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is Shane Murphy. I live at 1303 Kendrick with my wife, Rachel. You guys received an email from me recently as well, asking for you to deny this. Some things I want you to think about, and you don't have to answer this, but how would you feel if you walked out your front door and you suddenly saw a parking lot where when you bought in the community, you saw growth and development of residential homes and not small residential homes? Bates, you've been in our neighborhood, you've been to our barbecues, you've been to our cookouts. Our first one is a matter of fact. You look at the development there, you have homes, most recently approximately 20, that are being built for $600,000 plus. You have people in the community with homes that are worth more than that. So when we talk about economic viability of a neighborhood to continue as residential, there are three prime lots right now. there are three prime lots right there to continue that behavior. We don't need a parking lot there. And when we look at some of the things that are critical, mostly to me in this regard, and I'm going to be selfish for a moment, 1303, if you look at that map, I'm already surrounded on two sides by C1.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. Point of order, the 10 minutes has expired. You, by the majority of the council, can agree to extend that, and if you do extend that, then I would also propose that the additional time be added to Ms. Dunleavy's rebuttal.
We'll add an extra three minutes. That'll be enough for you?
Yes, sir. That'd be great, I appreciate that.
I'm enshrining that. I move that we add three minutes to both the applicant's time and the appellant's time.
Let's make it five minutes, all right?
Five. I amend my motion to five minutes for both sides.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of amending the speaking time to an additional five minutes for both sides? Signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I'll be quick. So if you look at the map, if those three lots were rezoned from R100 to C1, now I'm surrounded on three sides by commercial. My wife and I want to have kids. In fact, my wife and I were pregnant with triplets recently, and we lost all three of our babies in December. And the support, when you think about a member who's really going to add to the value of the community, would feel sympathetic and encourage the togetherness that this community has. And every one of my neighbors has reached out and supported us, with the exception of one person who made a comment that if our children had lived in four or five years, we would be moving anyway, and this would be a moot point to us. That's the type of person you have that doesn't care about this community, doesn't care about this neighborhood, and that's Mark Kick who made that comment to me when I approached him one-on-one to talk about this about three or four weeks ago. So I'm surrounded at that point by commercial. Accessory use not permitted, not complying with comprehensive plan, illegal clearcutting already, illegal spot zoning, surrounding at least one resident on three sides by commercial, inconsistent with home buyers' expectations, inconsistent with current residential development, overreaching application, violates safe and peaceful enjoyment, application inconsistent with business operation, applicant's failure to collaborate, seeks privilege not relief, dangerous precedence. And I'll end, Mr. Mayor, by saying encourage great behavior. Right? When we don't encourage great behavior, travesty occurs. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Joe Mosher.
Can we get another clock that's on the same, faces this way too? Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Joe Mosher. I live at 1282 Kendrick, just on the other side of the nursing home. A couple of points that I wanted to bring up this evening is, behind our home, we already have some woods as a buffer, but we also have kind of a creek bed that runs through there. So the mosquitoes that we have are horrific, and part of this proposal, a retention pond is required. So now we're going to have standing water adding to, you know, that issue already. Another thing I wanted you to consider is, basically, Mr. Kick is asking for special treatment. He's saying, he's basically asking you, I want to be treated different than every other business along Peachtree, and I want you to treat these three lots differently than every other residential R100 lot in Brookhaven. If we were talking about the owner of, let's say Dunkin' Donuts, and they happen to own the property right behind them, and they were going to demolish that house and create a parking lot there, there would be uproar in, you know, the club and Historic Brookhaven. A number of people have already mentioned that the planning committee's already voted against this. I think you're probably starting to see why. You know, they've asked for, instead of commercial or C1, to be zoned neighborhood shopping, but to me, that's already like halfway to C1, because once its neighborhood shopping in this parking lot goes in, it's never going to be residential again. It's gone. And then, let's say, five, 10 years down the road, you know, you've got a big parcel of commercial and pretty much commercial. You know, what's to stop them from selling off to some big developers that's going to make phase two of Town Brookhaven, or a 30-story high-rise like, you know, the Ritz-Carlton Building right there before, you know, you get to Waouka? And that's what we don't want, is, you know, people looking into our backyards and everything, and not to mention the added traffic that it brings. And then, I guess the, you know, the last point that I want to make is that really you have two people in favor of this, Mr. Kick and his wife, and you have close to 80 to 100 people opposed to it. And these are the same people who were at the Brookhaven Yes! meetings. These are the same people who manned phones, knocked on doors, passed out flyers, raised funds, talked to everybody under the sun about the city of Brookhaven and what it would mean to incorporate. We're well-educated, we're well-connected, we're tax-paying citizens, and we vote.
Next.
Amy Walker Bars.
I don't have anything to add, so I'll take it.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay. And whatever remaining time the applicant had in the additional five minutes, if Mr. Dunleavy or Mr. Kick want to come up?
Since I have 11 minutes and 20 seconds, I have a feeling that this body would not tolerate listening to me for 11 minutes and 20 seconds, so I'm going to try and cut it in half, and just kind of want to address some of the issues that have been raised by the concerned neighbors. The first issue that was raised, I believe by Mr. Thompson, was that there is nothing in the code that would allow the type of accessory parking lot use that is being proposed here. I respectfully disagree. I think that Ms. Cannon provided the appropriate explanation here. What we have is we have nuts and berries as one C1 lot, and then we have three residentially zoned lots. As one of the conditions that's being proposed by Ms. Cannon, the four lots would be merged into one lot. And so then it would come into compliance with the requirement under your code that was appropriately read by Mr. Thompson, that section 27-31 says your principal use has to be located on this, or your, excuse me, your accessory use has to be located on the same lot as your principal use. I have gone through the Brookhaven zoning ordinance I've practiced in DeKalb County for more years than I really want to disclose, and I'm pretty familiar with the DeKalb County zoning ordinance and the city of Brookhaven's ordinance. There's absolutely nothing that says you cannot have an accessory use on the same lot where there perhaps may be a zoning line down the middle of the lot, and you have different zoning classifications on the same lot. There's absolutely nothing prohibiting that, so I do question Mr. Thompson's reading of that particular provision. Unfortunately, I also contacted Ms. Betsy Stark of the DeKalb County Planning Department today to try and see if I could gain some insight into the aerial photographs that were submitted with respect to fill and removal of trees. And I did speak with Ms. Stark, and what she told me is she was unable to recall exactly what those pictures were all about, and she'd have to really take a look at that. She could not shed any light on the tree removal or the filter that's shown in those photographs. With respect to spot zoning, I respectfully submit to Mr. Thompson that this is not spot zoning. If you take a look at the map, we've got three residential lots that are, you know, in the hatched area. To the north is a C2 zoning where there is a public storage facility. To the east, you've got 1, 2, 3 C1 zonings. The definition of a spot zoning is where you might have one lot that is surrounded completely by different and, you know, more restrictive or greater restrictive zoning classifications. A spot zoning would certainly not result in this particular case. I think Ms. Cannon's explanation was the correct one from a planning standpoint, which is, if you have C1 fronting on Peachtree, from a planning perspective, it's somewhat logical to then have a neighborhood shopping designation, which is a less dense, more restrictive zoning classification than C1, stepping down to the single-family residential zonings across the street and to the rear of this property. This body has adopted, as I understand it, the DeKalb County Future Land Use Plan map for this particular area, and the vision for this property that this body has adopted is the TND land use classification. And the TND land use classification includes more than large, single-family residential lots. The TND land use classification and the vision that this board adopted encompasses things like neighborhood shopping, which would be consistent with the land use plan as noted by Ms. Cannon. Both business owners and property owners in the city of Brookhaven, I've heard tonight, especially when I saw the recognition and the awards that were handed out at the beginning, are valued by this body. Both contribute substantially to this community. Nuts and berries, as a long business owner in the city of Brookhaven, has contributed to this community just like the neighborhood and the neighbors have to this community. I would hope that both of these would be given, both of these stakeholders would be given an opportunity to sit down at the table and engage in some important and meaningful discussions, an opportunity that unfortunately, for a variety of reasons, just simply has not occurred. I would hope this body, because of the valuable contribution that business makers, business owners make to this community, would not vote to deny this application, and therefore, as a result of your own ordinance, bar any rezoning application coming in before this body for another two years. That seems to me to be a very, very punitive result when all the business owners asking for today is for a deferral, to be given an opportunity. Maybe that opportunity will come to naught, but I do think that after 20 years in this community, and given the vision for this area, given the Brookhaven-Peachtree overlay district and the importance of the economic viability of businesses in the BPOD, that this body would go ahead and grant Mr. Kick's request for a deferral. He's not asking for a special privilege. Everybody has the right to come before a governmental body and ask to rezone their property, just like all of these good people have the right to come in and oppose it. It's not a special privilege, it's merely a request. It's a request based upon his desire to expand his business, to make it more economically viable, and to have the appropriate amount of parking. What is to stop the creep or explosion that these neighbors talk about if this property was to be zoned neighborhood shopping? Your comprehensive plan. You've adopted a land use plan that has a TND designation only for the properties on the north side of Kendrick that go to, I believe that is 1286, if my old eyes are reading it correctly. That is where your TND stops, and that is where, I think, it is appropriate to draw that line in the sand. So I would ask that you allow the applicant an opportunity to engage with the community and defer this to council for June 10, 2014. And I used a little bit more than half of my remaining time, but I didn't use 11 minutes and 20 seconds. Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes.
When were you retained?
I was retained 24 hours before the planning commission hearing.
And so you didn't attend the planning commission meeting?
No, no, I did attend the planning commission hearing. Yes, I did.
Okay, and that was a couple weeks ago?
That was February 5. And on February 6, I emailed you all and said a lot of work needs to be done, and requested a deferral, or that this body consider it.
Okay. Any more questions? Maybe on the one?
I have a question for our staff. Thank you. For our staff, did the city of Brookhaven, in my research, I wasn't able to find the Kendrick Road overlay. Was the Kendrick Road overlay adopted in our ordinances?
No, it was not. It was removed in the adoption process.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. It, yeah, I don't have any other questions, but...
Anybody have any questions for staff, or applicant, or opposition?
Excuse me, I need to hand in my speaker card and my constitutional objections. I just want to... Actually, Linda, you might be able to answer, or Susan. I'm not familiar with the TND designation as what?
It's a traditional neighborhood development. I would feel much more comfortable that Susan is the planner, I'm going to tell you about that, but the TND is, you know, you've got a land use plan which has broader, has zoning categories with which it is considered compatible. Traditional neighborhood development contemplates single-family residences, you know, higher-density single-family residences, and a sort of neighborhood shopping, limited commercial.
Correct me if I'm wrong. Okay.
Any questions or comments? I'll just say one thing. Can I say something now?
Would you, I mean, Mayor, after the public hearing, if you go into the discussion on the item, then that would be the time to make the comments.
Okay. So if there are no more comments on this matter, we'll go to, I think that's it, right?
It is.
Into new business?
Correct.
If you would close the hearing.
Yeah, we'll close the public hearing and go to new business.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, under new business, ordinance 2014-01-01, RZ13-11. Also, item number two and item number three, the special land use permits. If you'll recall, Ms. Cannon in the public hearing presented those all in combination, but did mention that when you act on the case, that you would act on them separately. So the next three items are all related to the property for Ashford Green, but beginning with RZ13-11.
All right. So is there a motion on item one? The three go together, we have to do them separately.
Correct.
Is there a motion on ordinance number one?
This is for the 2014, 02, 01, and then 02?
No, we're going to do 01, 01, and then we'll have to do them each individually.
Yes, separately, a separate action on each.
But the motion will likely be the same for all three.
Yep. I'd like to move that we defer ordinance 2014-01-01, the John Hancock Life Insurance, rezoning from office and industrial, or office institution to OI at 4170 Ashford Dunwoodie Road. That they defer it to the city council meeting on April 22, to be remanded to the planning commission on April 2, with revisions due to the planning department by March 10.
All right. Is there a second?
Segmented.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
I move that we also defer ordinance 2014-01-02, SLUP 13-01, to exceed the height of all buildings and structures above five stories and 70 feet. The same motion where we would take it to the city council on April 22, to the public, to the planning commission on April 2, with revisions due to the planning department by March 10.
Is there a second?
Segmented.
Any discussion? All in favor of the deferral, signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Okay. And so, one more time for good measure, the ordinance 2014-01-03, the SLUP 13-02, to develop high-rise apartments in the ONI zoning district. The same stipulations as the previous.
Is there a second?
Segmented.
All in favor, any discussion? All in favor of the deferral, signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, it's deferred. Number four.
Yes, RZ13-14, Courtney DeFreeze.
Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve ordinance, I've lost my place here, ordinance...
RZ13, 2014.
For some reason, I'm...
Gotta go back to old faithful, old faithful.
I do have it, sorry. I just was, I'm letting it skip in the head.
It's sitting wireless here.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve RZ13-14, according to Freez's rezoning request from R75 to R50 at 1458 Edwad Drive, with conditions stated by our planning department, and amending that condition number six.
Just submit the conditions with the record. Have a submitted conditions with the record, yes?
Yeah, I actually, I can read it into the record if you like.
Okay.
If I can find it.
Technology, what page is it on? I'll find it.
It's about 400, page 400 and something.
Page 162.
162, thank you.
It's faster. Right there.
160... Okay. We're working on it.
Let's get this workout tonight.
All right. Here it is. Maybe somebody else should make the motion. Hold on, this is a difficult condition on here. Hold on, this is a difficult condition on here.
Would you like me to offer up some language for number six?
No, I took the time to write it down, so here it is. Item six, prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy for individual lots, the owner, developer shall pay the city of Brookhaven sidewalk bank the cost to construct a five-foot sidewalk with a two-foot wide landscape strip along the entire property frontage along Ustenula Drive. However, owner, developer shall not be subject to recompense for tree removal related to the sidewalks required by this condition. The use of funds paid to the sidewalk bank will be used to fund sidewalks within the neighborhood Brookhaven Fields with preference to Ustenula Drive and surrounding streets, and/or surrounding streets.
May I ask for a point of clarification?
Sure.
Would that be payment at the time, at or prior to CO?
I'd like for planning recommendations, planning department recommendations. If that's a recommendation, yes, I will accept that.
It would be prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy.
So I amend my motion to add, to include, clarifying the motion, to pay those funds at this...
Prior to the issuance.
Before.
Prior to the issuance.
Of a certificate of occupancy.
Better hurry up, he's got a low battery.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Bates.
Hey, we are working on this thing now. The hyperlink's not there yet.
All right, so that's your motion.
That is my motion.
I second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor of adoption of the motion? Signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, the ordinance is approved with the amendments and the conditions.
Can I make one comment?
Sure.
I just want to congratulate Mr. DeFreeze for getting the support of his neighbors ahead of time.
He's not listening.
I'm talking about you. I just want to congratulate you for getting the support of your neighbors. I think that's extremely helpful and obviously makes the process go a lot smoother. We're hoping that that's going to be sort of more the rule rather than the exception, and I really appreciate you doing that, and I'm glad that we were able to approve your plan tonight. I look forward to seeing that.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
We'll take it as high later. All right. Thank you. Number five.
RZ13-15, Atlanta Resource Center rezoning request from R100 to C1 at 1296, 1302, 1304 Kendrick.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we defer RZ13-15, Atlanta Resource Center rezoning request from R100 to C1 at 1296, 1302, and 1304 Kendrick, to the June 10th city council meeting date to be heard by our planning commission on June 4th with new applications to be submitted to our planning department by May 12th.
Is it new applications, or is it...
Updated information.
Updated information due by May 12th, 2014.
Is there a second?
I will second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I just want to make a point in this that we certainly respect and understand the concerns of the neighborhood. It is important that your concerns are heard, and they have been heard in this public hearing. But as a council, I think that it's judicious for us to allow the parties to have a chance to negotiate in this, so...
Any more discussion?
I just hope that you all will talk and that will, I think you've got some bridges to mend, and I really look forward to some creative solutions and a win-win for everybody. I love Nuts and Berries, and I love your street, and I love the kind of community this is what Brookhaven is all about. So let's find a meeting of the minds and maybe try to get this worked out. You both have good points, and I hope you go forth and negotiate in good faith. And Linda, I've watched you for years, and so I know you've got a lot of talent in this regard, and do your thing.
I'll just say this. Obviously, this application as it is right now doesn't have much support, and that's obvious probably up here and up there, so I think that's understood by everybody, and we're very mindful of that. The reason I asked about when Ms. Dunleavy was retained, because as an attorney, I know sometimes our clients are not aware of things they say or do, and until we can get a hold of them and make sure they do things the right way, it's kind of a, it's a tough, tough road to hoe. So, you know, pressing that reset button, I think, is very important here. And the reason I think dialogue is always important, and it sounds like there's been attempts to have dialogue, and there's been some pushback on both ends and maybe some hurt feelings, and I think in Brookhaven, what I always try to promote is people talking. If you can't agree, then you can't agree, but to just shut down and not go forward with talking, I think is not healthy for the community. I mean, if Nuts and Berries is likely not going anywhere, so if there's no talking by Mr. Kick to the neighbors and vice versa, there's probably going to be animosity and hurt feelings for the next 20 years. If his application gets denied, he's still going to be there, and y'all are going to have to drive by his business every day, and he's going to have to drive by y'all, and, you know, I think it'd be better for neighborhoods to be able to at least wave and talk to each other without hurt feelings. Not saying that this, that whatever comes back in June is going to be approved by the council or not approved, but it's always best to talk to one another and have a dialogue. And if you still can't agree, that's just, that's the way it is. But I really believe that folks should try to be more neighborly on both ends. Business owners need to understand that, and people who come to the city with development plans have been preaching this since day one. You've got to go to the neighborhoods first, you've got to knock on doors like your campaign, you've got to talk to people and sit down, offer to buy them coffee and do something before you come with an application. It's just, it's a prerequisite. And, you know, I keep saying this over and over again because we hear it again and again. People come without having had met with the neighborhood in a proper fashion, or don't, or are obstinate and don't, don't listen to what neighbors have to say. But the neighbors are, you know, they're our voters, they're our constituents, we have to listen to their concerns, and we want to balance those concerns with business interests as well. I know Mr. Kick owns this business in Brookhaven and lives in Brookhaven, and I just would like to see this, whether or not y'all can agree on something, I would like to at least be able to see some folks end up being civil to one another in the end, and that's my goal, is just civility and neighborliness, and that runs both ways, but especially for applicants. So that's my two cents. I don't get to vote on this, but that's what I believe, is just dialogue is always best, even if you can't agree in the end. Anybody else? All right, is there, we've already had a motion, right? Okay. All in favor of the deferral? Signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, the matter is deferred according to the amendment or the motion which stated June 10th and June 4th. All right, next.